Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter Caleb Wysocki. There will be a public hearing relative to policing in Pittsburgh, police reform, and budgeting. Thank you for tuning in. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. Will the clerk please read the subject of the hearing?
Today's hearing subject is policing in Pittsburgh, police reform, and budgeting.
Thank you. And for the record, we are joined today by council members Burgess, Coghill, Strasburger, and Wilson. And other members may join us as we go along and we'll make sure we introduce them as we see them. We will now move on to testimony from our registered speakers. Please give your name and neighborhood for the public record. Each speaker will have three minutes to address council. Please be reminded that this is an opportunity for the community to speak directly to council about the issues at hand. It is time for council to listen. Therefore, council will not be responding to individual comments. And I'm going to say their name, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Please correct me when you start your commenting on the pronunciation because I don't want to offend anybody. I just want to make sure that we get it correct. John Lavacar?
I'm John Lavacari from Shady Side.
Thank you, John. Thank you for correcting me, too.
That's all right. Should I start speaking?
Yes, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you, members of the city council. Hello viewers. Last year, a study revealed that Pittsburgh has some of the worst health outcomes for our black citizens, particularly black women of any city in the United States. The city of Pittsburgh could and should put its budget towards beginning to rectify some of these unconscionable disparities. Yet, in this city, we still spend gargantuan and ever-increasing sums of money on our police department. Across the country, people are awakening to the sordid history of police departments as purveyors of violent oppression against black people. This awakening represents a valuable opportunity to redirect funding away from a department that criminalizes and oppresses black people and towards services that would represent a start towards rectifying racial disparities, including affordable housing, education, health, and investment in black communities. I urge the city council to cancel the planned Zone 5 police station project that would reinforce the gentrification and displacement in East Liberty. I urge the council to cancel all public safety projects in the capital budget and reallocate funding towards affordable housing. I urge the city to immediately cut the police budget and police staff numbers to the initial levels from when Mayor Paduto took office, less than $40 million in the budget, and 857 or fewer officers, and commit to reduce these numbers by 10% every year thereafter. Lastly, I urge the city council to ban the dangerous predictive policing and facial recognition technologies which would entrench racist policing practices through modern tech and to give community veto power on any surveillance technologies used by the Bureau of Police. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker is...
Greetings. This is Al Machino, calling in regards or representing the Air Clock Confederacy of the Average Native American People. What I wanted to put onto the record is, some years ago, I was personally affected by police inaccountability. I was shot by a stray bullet and never received an apology, never received any acknowledgement that I was even shot. I was treated very poorly. And to this day, and it has been eight years since I was injured, I have never received a phone call, a letter, or anything from the City of Pittsburgh, the police department, or anything. This is a serious problem. It is not only the people who have perished as a result of inaccountability. It is also people who are living with injuries as a result of police inaccountability. And something needs to be done, retroactively done, for these people, people like myself. This is a personal story that I have. Not only was I shot, I am handicapped. I cannot fully function as I once did eight years ago. And so I'm living with the scars. I am living with daily pain, to which I am just living with in this current state. Fourteen years ago, my brother and a friend of his was traveling in Homewood in automobile, to which they both died in, in the corner of Bennett and Lane, an intersection that, to this day, I will not go through. My family has not received justice. They were found to be negligent in causing both of their deaths. Yet, my nieces and nephews were meant to live on without any financial compensation as a result of losing their father. How do I look at them and to tell them there is justice in this system? There hasn't been justice for my entire family, and we are seeking that justice through these platforms, and we won't be silent anymore. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. And for the record, I'm sorry that you're in pain. Next speaker, Tim Stevens. Tim Stevens?
Unmute my song. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity. Wanted to thank you all for the opportunity for the public to speak to these important issues, and I wanted to thank Councilman Burgess and Lavelle for having the wisdom to introduce what I think is very much needed police reform legislation in our city. And the text introduction in Bill 2020-0404, which clearly states the historic background with regard to bias in the criminal justice system that has existed for centuries, both locally and nationally, with regard to the treatment of black people, lays the foundation for the need to make significant change in how city funds are utilized and how city funds, including funds used to support the various services of Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, might be what I call reimagined. The level of violence we've experienced in predominantly African-American neighborhoods in Pittsburgh over the decades, call out for remedies which go beyond the funding, support, and programs of the past. As Chairman and CEO of the Black Political Empowerment Project, I call upon the city council to unanimously support creation of a fully capitalized Stop the Violence Fund, be created by the Office of Management and Budget and the... We agree that this fund should be a separate fund aimed at preventing the violence and the criminal activities that continue to invade our communities. I therefore also support Bill 2020-0410, Version 1, which should directly support or request the city controller to transfer 250,000 from police salaries, police for court recruit allowance to the Stop the Violence Fund within the 2020 operating budget. I even request that you look at how additional funds might be pulled out of the city budget wherever and including the police budget that might be better utilized to protect our citizens through services that would directly impact violence in a different perspective. With Pittsburgh having been designated as designated racism, a public health crisis in our city, and has identified the myriad of negative effects such racism has had upon Pittsburgh's African-American population, including historic differences in how some police officers have interacted with our city's black citizens, I also call for passage of Bill 2020-0405, Version 1, which calls for the Pittsburgh police officers to have the duty to intervene in any situation when civil or constitutional rights are knowingly being deprived. We cannot afford in our city to have another case of a George Floyd, or anywhere in the nation for that matter. The prohibition of the acquisition of military equipment or weaponry, I personally find offensive for the use of this equipment, the use thereof, laying the foundation for dislike of our police. And in many cases, the presence of such equipment contributes to negative interactions between the community and the police at a level that probably wouldn't exist otherwise. Our police bureau should not be seen in any way to be at war with the citizens they are paid to protect and serve. And as a longtime civil...
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. We have Ed Nasser.
Hi, I'm Ed Nasser. I'm the Executive Director of City of Bridges Community Land Trust located at 143rd Street in Central Lawrenceville.
Thank you.
City of Bridges is a nonprofit community land trust serving the city of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County. We build community ownership that preserves permanent affordability, empowers individuals, and ensures responsible growth and stewardship. We're here tonight, like so many others, to encourage the city of Pittsburgh to reimagine our public safety budget, to fully reimagine public safety, to look at an accompanying reallocation of public safety funds towards community-centered investment. In 1953, President Eisenhower said, "Every gun that is made, every warship launched, every rocket fired signifies in the final sense, a theft from those who hunger and aren't fed, from those who are cold and aren't clothed." It's a powerful statement. What if we localize it? What if we acknowledge the reality that every SWAT vehicle and K-9 unit could be an after-school program or an affordable home? Over the last month, we've seen videos of our tax dollars turned into tear gas in the shadow of Penn Avenue's new luxury housing, live streaming a reality that people of color have testified to for decades. Just a few years ago, our organization joined others, activists and organizers, to coalesce around a simple message, keep Pittsburgh home. We fought for a housing trust fund, one that we were told would require a tax increase. We fought, we organized, we debated, we organized more for $10 million, less than 10% of this year's police budget. Last year, the first capital budget the city council considered had a 30% cut from the URA for housing development, $1.3 million was reduced. So what did we do? We fought, and we organized, and we debated, and we organized more, all for less than 1% of this year's police budget. Last year, Pittsburgh's Economic Justice Circle put it pretty succinctly. They said budgets are moral documents. And they are. Budgets are a vision statement. They're the clearest statement of what our real priorities are. As an organization that dares to reimagine property ownership through a lens of equity and justice with a vision of a collective future, we're here today to encourage city council, the mayor's office, to encourage all of us to reimagine a future where budget priorities are focused on our hopes and aspirations and not our fears. Let's make our budget a series of moral investments, investments in people and places who have been and still are systemically disinvested in, investments that don't over-police communities and people of color, but instead deliver the resources and investment they need to thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Carmen Brown.
Yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is, yeah, Carmen Brown from the Ninth Council District. And I just want to say that again, and I'm going to continue to say that this Stop the Violence Fund should not be controlled by Ricky Burgess and his cronies, because that's what's going to happen at the end of the day. And I think, and this budget, again, the people should be involved in this. I don't even know why we're having this kind of meeting, because, you know, there was no, really no engagement. People are not knowing about these meetings that was going on, because I talked to a lot of people in my community. They have no idea what's going on. They have no idea about these meetings. So I know, I think that you all should find another way to try to publicize so everybody can be part of this discussion, because that's a big problem right now. But again, I do not want to see Ricky Burgess, okay, in charge of anything to do with money. Hopefully, this budgeting is going to be overlooked by the people, not just by Ricky Burgess, again, and his cronies. Because again, a lot of the systemic racism in our community has to do with him, has to do with the housing that he refused to allow low-income people to have, because he makes these deals with these developers, and he's been doing it for years and years and years. But again, like I said, is that, you know, Ricky Burgess, again, should not be handling, or he should not be controlling, or he should not, it should not go into a nonprofit that he knows, because this is always the case. This is why we never get nothing done. I was looking at an article about $500,000 going into this fund, and what happened? Nothing happened. We still had killing. We still had police violence. Where is this money going at? This is our tax dollars. And again, when I looked at the people who were involved, who were overseeing this money, it was his people. So I understand why this money didn't get to the places that it should go to, social services. It should have went to other areas of housing. And most of the time, like I said, if the housing that Ricky Burgess proposed is not affordable, is not affordable for low-income people, and most of the people don't have the qualified income to afford any of this stuff. So again, the systemic racism, we need to be looking at, we need to be looking at our councilperson and what he is doing. Okay? So that's what I have to say, and I'm done.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gabrielle Gray.
Good evening, city council representatives. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Gabrielle Gray, District 9, home with Breston. I pray everyone is safe and in good health. There is no room to defund the police budget that will become dollars to fund the interests of politicians and their gatekeeper leaders and nonprofit organizations. I am here to raise awareness about the lack of community engagement there has been between Councilman Ricky Burgess and the residents of District 9 regarding the city council resolution passed for $250,000 to be transferred by the city controller from the Pittsburgh Police Department budget to the Stop the Violence Fund. It is a great concern of mine that this resolution has been passed and is being discussed budgetarily without a clear set of functions or agenda. The operations of the fund should be jointly determined by both city council and residents that will be impacted by the use of this fund. Additionally, council and representatives, I'm sorry, additionally, the fund has no clear narrative, which leaves room for a great amount of suspicion. The $250,000 transfer has not been clearly established as a response to the recent defunding the police movement. Instead, the fund's narrative appears to have intentions to fund the Stop the Violence program established by Councilman Burgess in 2018. With that said, will a portion of this $250,000 fund the $63,887,000 salary of the Stop the Violence Fund coordinator? If so, it appears that Councilman Burgess and Councilman Lavelle are exploiting the "defund the police" narrative that is popular today to fund the previously established Stop the Violence program. It will take more than a Stop the Violence fund to actually stop this violence. There has to be many more conversations with residents, in particular in District 9, regarding the functions and clear agenda of the Stop the Violence Fund. While this fund may appear well-intentioned, it is more harm than good without having resident priorities in its agenda and in its budget allocation. It is going to take better leadership from city council that engages more with residents and is transparent and accountable in order to stop the violence. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Celeste Scott. I don't see Celeste. Next speaker, Fernando Soriano.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Fernando Soriano. I am a resident of the city of Pittsburgh in the neighborhood of Friendship. And first and foremost, I just wanted to reaffirm kind of what all of the other people, other residents of the city have been saying. In the past few meetings that I've been in attendance of regarding police reform and budgeting, I definitely agree with pretty much everything that's been said thus far. In terms of the necessity for transparency and stakeholder inclusion when it comes to budgetary decisions, especially as it pertains to the Stop the Violence Fund that was established by Councilman Burgess in 2018, a large portion of this was stated to be responsible for or being intended by police. And given, you know, some of the testimony that I've heard from different people, like Dr. Jesse Wozniak, who has a particular background in criminal justice and policing, I think that it's important that we are able to clearly look and sit and see where violence stems from in terms of trauma, in terms of lack of resources, and in terms of the criminalization of young and otherwise black and brown people in the community. I mean, I know that Dr. Wozniak, just the other meeting, was talking about the fact that by increasing things such as available, affordable housing, you then decrease costs of things like municipal jails by helping to address the source of crime being in poverty and things of that nature. And so I just wanted to reaffirm, you know, a lot of the statements that have already been said. I think that thus far, there's been pretty much a unanimous consensus on what the people here want, and I wanted to reinforce and affirm what those are. So I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, James Bryant. I do not see James. James Bryant? I do not see James. And so that exhausts our list of registered speakers. And now I'll turn over to council members for any comments. Council members, Councilman Burgess, did you want to go first?
Just, we thank the speakers for their engagement. We're having a number of conversations, and I look forward to having those conversations and negotiating with our colleagues as we move forward. But my interest is that we must do things that are practical. And so one of the things I will say, and I have laid on the table bills, to my best knowledge, that are legal and practical. If there are other bills that activists or members of community that are legal and practical want to introduce, I would be willing to sponsor them and introduce them. But I think inaction, not doing anything at this time, is the fear. And I'm hoping to have my bills passed before recess. I think that it's important at these times to show the black community that we are, that we are taking, and the community in general, that we're taking these concrete actions as a council, as a city, to stand with them. And so I look forward to continuing this conversation.
Thank you. Other members? No other members? Sorry, takes me a second to go through. I just, I just want to say, yes, Councilman Coghill.
Yes. No, so I just wanted to say, I want to thank all the speakers as well, and I've tuned into every public hearing, and so far, what did we have? I think one post agenda at this point. Again, you know, I think what I hear more from the speakers and people calling in is not so much about "defund the police," "police brutality." I think it's more about the real issue, and I think Rev. hits the nail on the head with this, as far as, you know, deprived neighborhoods and resources and jobs and things that I think that we can help in bringing to this. I do believe there's a spot in a good role that the social workers slash groups, the groups that we had on the other day, I can't remember all of them by name. But, you know, I think there's a good spot for them here, and many more, I would think. There are just a handful. I'm not sure what's out there. And I didn't realize that people were out there to, you know, get into the weeds and, you know, help with anti-violence actions in any which way that they can. However, I will say, I'm a little hesitant to allocate that $250,000 for a couple of reasons. Number one, I hate the word "defund the police," and that's what all the callers use. I don't hear it from council members, which I'm happy that I don't hear that. It's a reallocation of funds, and I'm fine with that at some point. But not until after I feel like we have fully engaged with, you know, Director Hisrich and the Pittsburgh Police, and knowing what it will mean to them and what it won't mean to them, the $250,000. And I'm more interested in finding money in other spots. I hope that, you know, we could afford to have these groups that we had on the other day and the roles that they might play. I'm also really concerned as to what the roles they do play, especially in these times when, you know, I would think that the roles that they would play would be engagement on the street, really talking to people. I'm just not sure exactly, you know, what roles they play. But I would love to balance that all out. I'm not against taking $250,000 from public safety, but not until I know exactly where it's going to and what the impact is on the police. So with that, you'll find me very supportive on a lot of changes that I think we need. And, you know, I'm looking forward to, you know, talk with other members as to what they are. But I think we're premature with moving this money. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to bring up an issue, and a timeline issue that I've been thinking about recently, and that is that, well, we're midsummer right now, but sooner rather than later, we're going to be approaching fall, which is when budget season begins for council and for the mayor's office and his team. And I think that we have a real opportunity this year, given a couple of things. Given the interest in public safety and policing budgets and how we can reallocate resources to many other urgent causes and needs. We also have, we also have this opportunity with the different ways that we're engaging with the public through video meetings, online meetings, that sort of thing. I think we have an opportunity as a council to reimagine not just what a budget can look like through using, you know, criteria to make sure we're viewing it through an equity lens, but also in the way that we engage with the public. And to make sure that the public is not just engaged through the way that the Office of Community Affairs has done so, you know, each year, in increasing amounts with public forums throughout the summertime, which is wonderful, but also during the times when I think council is asking questions and learning from our own department directors, and to think about how we can really make sure that the public is a part of that process as well. In the past, it's been many, many, many hearings where council and council members are hearing from department directors. And, you know, I have to say that sometimes those hearings are scarcely attended and by council members, let alone the public. So I just wanted to put that out there publicly. I've had some conversations with some council members. I know Councilwoman Gross and I spoke about this, and I'm eager to have this conversation with other council members to figure out how we can make this a reality this budget season. So both the budget itself, but also the process. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, I'll just concur. We did, Councilwoman Strasburger and I spoke briefly this morning. And it's, I've said this, I think, week after week now with our public comments in council session and in these public hearings, that it's so good to hear from people who are really educating themselves deeply. Some of the comments at our regular weekly council sessions have read the legislation before it's actually even hit the table. So it's really just like it's being introduced as new legislation. It hasn't even gotten to committee for discussion, but the callers are calling in, and they've read every word of the legislation, and they're making really informed comments and bringing us information that we didn't have. So if we can carry this energy over to our budget season, just because really it's amazing to have this much citizen energy focused on our budget. I said the same thing just hours ago to the Gender Equity Commission. As commissioners, I have been lobbying those commissioners to do gender-based budgeting, and we have the opportunity, I think, to do kind of that equity-based budgeting for an intersectional gender and race lens to look at how have we been spending money, and has it benefited the people that we intend to benefit? Or, you know, have we even looked at who is benefiting from the money we're spending, both in operations and in capital? And if we haven't done a good enough job, And if we haven't done a good enough job disaggregating the data, is the phrase that we're really pushing for in that commission, so that council has the information to weigh, well, who's benefiting from this budget line or that budget line or this city department or that city department? We need that data, and our citizens need that data, so that then we can have an informed discussion where we're all, we all have the same information in order to make these decisions, to really talk about where the public imagination, some people are saying, where the citizen energy really wants us to spend significant dollars. $600 million operating budget, $100 million capital budgets, those can make a difference. So that is the opportunity that we have. Now, council will be going into recess, but as we come back in September, as Councilwoman Strasburger says, things go really quickly. And we are required to pass the balanced budget by December 31st. So that's the timeline for citizens to pay attention to, and we look forward to working with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Any other members? Councilman Wilson? Your mic, Councilman. I can't hear you. Wait, there's something happening now, but...
Can you hear me now?
No, I can't.
All right. Sorry about that. I apologize. Thanks for bearing with me. Little technical difficulty. I just want to say that a lot of times, you know, with the virtual experiences that we're doing, it's led me to kind of feel a bit on, you know, not in touch with what's happening in my own district sometimes. And so recently, I've been making my best effort to get out and go to the areas where we have the most complaints about a lot of issues that people will call police for, or, you know, just make 911 calls about an area where there is a lot of, there's a lot of drug addiction, there's a lot of homelessness, there's a lot of just kind of hanging out, a lot of bars are closed. So I have areas in my district that are, you know, in need of outreach. And so that's one of the reasons that I've been reaching out to my local zone one. And through that experience, it's been enlightening to hear the current strategies of what it's, what the current strategy is when calls like this come in. And it's been, you know, it's been a good conversation and really helped me to ask, you know, I guess what I should say, it's really been a help to hear everyone through this process, all the public, all the people who made public comment, people on social media that are concerned, to really have me asked a question to my local zone of, how are we, you know, are we doing any sort of outreach? So instead of having a neighborhood resource officer, that may be a possibility in my area, you know, is that, would it be better suited to have someone to do specific outreach for need from the police force? So maybe not a, you know, an officer, but someone else. And to really, to really, you know, try to manage some of the, some of the bigger societal problems. And I think that's really what I'd like to see moving forward and, you know, with our, with our local zones and how we're communicating. At least that's been my direction, how we can really have that larger conversation. So, you know, it's just challenging right now with the virtual world, but, you know, I've been trying to make my best effort to really understand how there can be, you know, some changes on that front. So anyway, thanks for leading this meeting, and, you know, also thanks to Councilman Burgess and Lavelle for actually, you know, pushing forward this legislation.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? No more second round or anything? Okay. I just want to say that we have really tried to reach out to the community and to make sure that we notify the community. And we've had more hearings on this issue than I can recall in recent memory of any here, of any, any other item or agenda item. We've had, we're having two post-agendas, and we are, everyone's encouraged to come and speak at, not come, but join us and speak at Public Comment before our meetings on Tuesdays and Wednesdays every week. And I want to be clear, even though we've made all these attempts, I think it's great that we have speakers, and I do want to thank the speakers who have been coming out, because it's really important to hear from people. But I do want to say that there's a lot of times we hear from people not through this way. We hear through social media, we hear through messages, messenger, text messages, Twitter, I mean, any kind of social media outlet, emails, phone calls. But a lot of people are coming forward. And I mean, I wish that there were a way to get people to feel more comfortable coming forward. But I think it's just the more people realize how much we do want to hear about some of these issues and what their thoughts are on some of them. I do think that we need to do better, but I do think we've done a lot in terms of reaching out to the public this time. And for a lot of issues, we've been doing that more and more frequently, I think. But I also want to say that it's concerning when you know that there are people that should be coming out and should be speaking and aren't, and so we're not hearing from them. So it's, when you say it's, you know, we want public input, I don't think you could have even 200 residents come out and speak on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh as well, because they're not getting the full picture either. A lot of times, people come in with an agenda, and that's what they're speaking to, and they bring people with them. But somebody may not be good at organizing that group of people, or not feel comfortable with that. So I think that's where we, as council members, should know our district and know what people are saying. And I think that's why it's important for us to make sure that we're relaying some of those messages back to one another. And when we talk about money going into areas, I absolutely think that we should be doing more and doing better. But I also want to remind people that what I see happen in the city drives me insane when I see us taking money from one area, putting it into that area, and then another area is being left out. There's got to be a way to do a little bit of balancing here, to remember that there are people that pay the taxes that want something done in their neighborhoods, but they're going to leave, and there's not going to be a tax base here to even take care of the people that need taken care of. So I think that there's, we've got to do that and show some balance of that. But we've got to make sure that we're doing things more purposefully, and I think that, to make sure that we're not leaving people out there, we're making sure Pittsburgh is affordable, and that we're helping people as we can. So we're lifting everyone up, because that's what this is really about. It's making sure everybody gets a helping hand. And I think, to me, that's the part I want to see, I love about the social work services. I love that. I'd love to see more of that. But I also think that the county has a role here, and I think that the mayor's office, I think we're talking about some of the things that need to happen. They're already doing some of these things, they're rolling them out. As we're talking about them, they're already rolling things out. So I do want to give them credit for some of the things that they are doing, because they're doing this without, you know, other places. They're, you know, they may be doing things a little bit slower, or people may still be protesting to get them done. Well, in this city, they're already getting some of those things done. So I want to acknowledge the work that is being done, but not to say that we don't have a lot more to go. And I'd like to see us work a little bit more. I do want to see these, I would like to see us wait until we have all the, here have a little bit more conversation, but I do know Reverend wants to pass these by next week. And so before next week, we have another public hearing, which is tomorrow, and we have another post-agenda, which is Monday. So we do have two more times to engage. And next week, we will hear from the FOP as well as some of the other people that we had at the meeting. We'll have a different group of people at this second post-agenda, so that we're getting a well-rounded group of people to speak. And hopefully, by then, we come up with some solutions and work with Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lavelle. And I think Councilman Cross is a sponsor of this, I'm not sure. But hopefully, we can work with them to come up with some solutions that we mostly feel comfortable with and that the public feels confident that we've heard them, and, but yet, we want to give them some immediate action items. So with that said, anything else from the members? Can I have a motion to excuse, I'm sorry, to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, moved.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Meetings, all in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned. Thank you.